Good morning. We'll get started in just a couple of minutes. Well, good morning and happy new year Kent County. My name is Lisa Postumis and this is the first organizational meeting of the, this is the organizational meeting of Kent County Board of Commissioners 2021. In the absence of and until, until there is a chair elected, I will be serving as Chair of the Organizational Meeting to conduct the business at hand. So this meeting is officially called to order and at this time, I want to be clear on the record that we have received oaths of office from every sitting and serving County Commissioner here in Kent County. So they have all been sworn in and we do have their oaths of office on file as of today. But in the interest of ceremony, I would, I've been asked to administer the oath to everyone collectively here on this call or this Zoom meeting. And so I quick, I would ask that Commissioners, please stand for the purpose of being sworn in. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of this state, and that you will faithfully perform the duties of the Office of County Commissioner in and for Kent County, Michigan, to the best of your ability?
I do.
I do.
I do.
I do.
Thank you. At this time, I will take the roll call of attendance. Due to recent changes in the law while we, while the state of Michigan does allow for for remote meetings under the Open Meetings Act with parameters in place that, that there be two-way communication and, and such. When I call your name, I also ask that you please state your location, whether it's you're in your city or your township and Kent County. So for example, assuming, for example, if I were to be called, right now I'm in Grand Rapids. I would say present or here, Grand Rapids, Kent County, Michigan. So with that, we will begin the roll call in alphabetical order, Commissioners and Tor.
Here.
And Commissioner. Sorry, one more time?
Here. I'm sorry, I missed the, for the earlier instruction. I'm sorry about that. Do I mention where I'm from?
Nope, not where you're from, where you're located right now.
Okay, I'm sorry, Sparta, Michigan.
Thank you. Commissioner Bolter.
Here Cascade, Michigan, Kent County.
Commissioner Brevi.
Adonia, Kent County, Michigan. Here.
Commissioner Bulkowski.
Present Grand Rapids, Michigan, Kent County.
Commissioner Burl.
Present Wyoming, Michigan, Kent County.
Commissioner Green.
Present Plainfield Township, Kent County.
Commissioner Hennessy.
Grand Rapids, Kent County, here.
Commissioner Jones.
Present Cannon Township, Kent County.
Commissioner Coleman.
I am here currently in the City of Wyoming, portion of District Nine.
Commissioner Legrand.
Present Grand Rapids, Kent County, Michigan.
Commissioner McLeod.
Present Kentwood, Kentwood, Michigan, Kent County.
Commissioner Morgan.
I'm here Cortland Township.
Mr. Ponstein.
Here Granville, Michigan, Kent County.
Commissioner Skaggs.
Here East Grand Rapids, Kent County.
Commissioner Sparks.
Present City of Kentwood, Kent County.
Commissioner Stack.
I am here, City of Walker, Kent County.
Commissioner Teal.
I'm here Grand Rapids Township.
Commissioner Womack.
I am here Grand Rapids, Michigan, Kent County.
Commissioner Wooden.
Here Grand Rapids, Michigan, in Kent County.
Excellent. So there are nineteen members present and none absent. We have a quorum. Um, I would like to, at this time, call on Commissioner Stack for the invocation.
Thank you, Clerk Lyons. So we've just finished a year unlike any that we have ever had before and one that we will never forget, I am sure. And I have to admit that as I watched that ball drop at the end of the year, I couldn't help but say to myself, just, just let it go. Get this puppy over with. And in fact, as I listened to a lot of the comments over the course of the last days and weeks before the end of the year, the prevailing observation was let's get this year done with and move on as if everything changes just by a flip of the calendar year. And that would be great, of course, if we could just package up all those challenges from 2020, put a lot of duct tape on it, put it on the history shelves and move on. But, but the fact is the calendars just don't have that kind of power. And if we put our hope in the change in the calendar as a way of making things right, we will certainly be disappointed because the fact is the dust settles and we look at what we face this coming year. It is clear that we still do have a contagious virus threatening our health or in our lives. We have challenges of assessing implementing effective vaccination processes. We have an economy still reeling from the shocks of mitigation orders. We have expanding behavioral health crises, substance use crises, environmental contaminations, a political landscape that continues to look like it is fracturing, and we continue to struggle with the demons of bigotry and racism. So if our hope was that turning the year to 2021 would make it all different, that was a misplaced hope. In fact, if our hope is in Lansing, we probably are still misplaced in our hope as if we are hoping for Washington or our political parties or caucuses to solve these problems for us. So it's probably very fitting that as we start this year, we start with an invocation. So please join me in that invocation. Heavenly Father, Lord God, Creator, we approach you as we end one year and start another, having taken on this daunting task of governing the people of Kent County. And we are all the more convicted of our need for hope, for wisdom and direction. We confess that when we look about us, we tend to see division, tension and distrust. And yet we acknowledge that you are the source of unity and peace. We confess that we tend to see chaos and discord, but we acknowledge that you are the source of structure and order. We confess that we see a world spiraling around us without any apparent direction and purpose. But we acknowledge that you engage in this world with intent and a plan weaving apparent randomness into purpose. And we tend to see hopelessness, yet acknowledge you are hope. So we thank you that you have blessed us in this country as a country dedicated to the pursuit of liberty and justice for all. We thank you that we have political systems capable of flexing and expanding to allow room for respectful diversity of values and beliefs. We thank you for the commitment and the work of our staff and administration of the county that assure order and structure on a daily basis. We thank you for the work of our law enforcement community that ensures security and peace in our communities. And we thank you for the commitment of our Commissioners as they take up the mantle to serve residents of Kent County. As a Commission and as we move into this coming year and this new session, we ask that you open our eyes and our minds to the purposes for which we are appointed and elected. We ask that you convict us of the significance of this calling that compels us to elevate the good of the community above our personal goals and desires. We ask that you impart wisdom and insight to each of us as we seek to bring justice and order to the challenges we face. We ask that you impart humility to accept the limits of our own understanding and to be open to the wisdom and insight you impart to our colleagues and to others. We ask for a genuine respect for each other, a respect that honors them as your creation and honors you as their creator. We ask for patience and we ask that you give us civility that reduces the noise around us and allows us to listen. And we ask for perseverance when our work becomes confusing, frustrating and exhausting. Thus, the work of this Commission over the course of this coming year and this coming session. And we pray that that work will preserve order, promote security, advance liberty and secure justice. We pray this in your name.
Amen. Thank you, Commissioner Stack. At this time, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag. And to the republic.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you so much. Okay. The first order, the first order of business today will be the election of, of the Chair of the Board. At this time, I open the floor for nominations for Chair.
Clerk Lyons, I raised my hand. This is Commissioner Jones.
Commissioner Jones.
Thank you. I would like to nominate Commissioner Mandy Bolter from today until the end of calendar 2021 to be the Board Chair.
Commissioner Jones has nominated Commissioner Mandy Bolter for Chair. Is there a second?
Second by Womack.
Commissioner Womack has seconded the motion. Are there any more nominations? Are there any more nominations? Is there a motion to close nominations?
Clerk Lyons, I, Commissioner Jones, and I would like to move that we close nominations and have a roll call vote to have Commissioner Mandy Bolter be our Board Chair.
For Womack.
Support, it's been moved by Commissioner Jones and supported by Commissioner Womack that the board be closed and that we take a roll call vote for Commissioner Mandy Bolter for Chair. I do, before I call that role, I want to make sure that, to reiterate, it's been our past practice, while, while these would be normally voice votes, it's been our past practice during Zoom for transparency and also for accurate tally and recording of votes to do roll call votes. So per Commissioner Jones's request and past practice, this will be a roll call vote. So on the motion to, on the motion to appoint Commissioner Mandy Bolter, Chair of the Kent County Board of Commissioners, Commissioner Antor.
Yes.
Commissioner Bolter.
Yes.
Commissioner Brevi.
Yes.
Bulkowski.
Excuse me, yes.
Commissioner Burl.
Yes.
Commissioner Green.
Yes.
Commissioner Hennessy.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Coleman.
Yes.
Commissioner Legrand.
Yes.
Commissioner McLeod.
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan.
Yes.
Mr. Ponstein.
Yes.
Commissioner Skaggs.
Yes.
Commissioner Sparks. Commissioner Stack.
Yes.
Commissioner Teal.
Yes.
Commissioner Womack.
Yes.
Commissioner Wooden.
Yes.
There are nineteen ayes, zero nays. The motion passes unanimously. Congratulations, Madam Chair, Commissioner Bolter.
Thank you.
At this time, I will hand the meeting over to our Chair, Mandy Bolter.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I will say a couple of really quick things. I feel like I kept all of you, well, most of you quite a while at our last meeting, so I'll try to be very brief. But I want to quickly thank you all. I truly am very humbled to serve this body because I do wholeheartedly feel like we serve the best county in the entire nation. So the fact that you have selected me to lead you is very, very humbling and I take it very seriously. And I, I genuinely appreciate it and feel very blessed to, to serve you. I want to welcome our new members, Commissioners Burl, Green, Legrand and McLeod. Welcome. We, we try to, try to keep a tight ship and, and, and get through things, but sometimes we go a little long. So bear with us and, and welcome to the board. I want to stress that we did have a very tough year, but we really pulled through. I think Kent County really shined, especially with the CARE Subcommittee. It was yeoman's work. We could have very quickly thrown together buckets of money and, and not held accountability or really assessed what the needs of the community were. But I think that we really took the time to make sure that the money was well spent where it was needed. I really want to recognize those Commissioners, Stack, Jones, Brevi, Morgan, Ponstein, Womack and Skaggs for all their work and Wayman and the staff. I, I don't think that the staff through the, through the entire time got any time off this entire year. And I want to really recognize that. It was ours and I appreciate the Subcommittee for, for continuing to work on that. You know, we had a lot of departments that were really under pressure, especially with CARES. I really want to highlight purchasing and Cal, being able to get the PPE up and running as quickly and efficiently as he did. Finance, being able to pull together Linda Howell and, and our legal team pulling together all the agreements and probably most notably our Health Department. I mean, that was just amazing that they really shined through this. I'm proud that we were able to thoughtfully push out that hundred and fifteen million in a very short amount of time, highlighting the needs of the business community, schools, homelessness, health and safety. I think that was very key. Coming out of this election year, I've said it every time I've been elected, I really hope we can focus on bipartisanship. I really hope that we are not coming to board meetings trying to score political points. And so I ask that, that, that not happen and we just really focus on policy. I want to also focus on making sure all of our members are prepared to serve their community as best as we possibly can. We will beholden budget boot camp. We will have a board retreat. We'll be making sure we have a balanced budget. And I expect an emphasis on our transition. We're losing our administrator this year and that's a big blow. It's a big opportunity and we have a lot to do to make sure to, that we fill that void, which we know Wayman, it's a, it's a big, it's a big shoes, figure, figuratively and literally to fill. So we will be, that will be a big challenge this year of our board and I think we'll, we'll get through it and we will succeed. But it will be a big, it's one of the biggest decisions I think we will make as a body this year. Obviously, we're going to be emphasizing, you know, a few things, but probably most notably the Health Department, the vaccination rollout and continue to support them and make sure they have everything they need to keep our community safe through that time. We've got the three build outs that we supported last year and then put on hold are now proceeding. So we will be focused on that a little bit, most likely get back to some of that land use focus. And then I think most notably through this year, we saw that parks and broadband and Wi-Fi access were huge for our entire community. And I really hope that we take a really deep dive into those two issues this year. And, and lastly, I think that, you know, who would have thought that, those are the expected things, but who would have thought last year at this time that we would be dealing with a hundred-year health pandemic? So I'm certain there will be challenges that we're not planning for that will come up. And I'm also very confident that we will get through them together. So with that, we will prevail. I'm honored to serve and I'm honored to serve you, my board members. I hope you know I'm always available. I, I want to be always accessible to you. If I can help you in any way, I'm here to do it. So thank you. All right, we are going to move on to item seven of our agenda, election of our Vice Chair. Do I have a motion?
Move to nominate Commissioner Stan Stack as Vice Chair of the Kent County Board of Commissioners.
Moved by Commissioner.
Commissioner.
支撑.
Support.
Support by Commissioner Jones. Do we have any other nominations of our Board Vice Chair? Don't see any hands raised and I don't hear anyone. Any other motions?
Commissioner Bolter, I move we close nominations and have a roll call vote to have Stan Stack be our Vice Chair.
Support by Brevi.
Moved and supported all in favor. I, I don't know if we need a voice vote for that. Okay, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to close the board for nominations and cast a vote for Commissioner Stan Stack for Vice Chair, Commissioners Antor.
Yes.
Brevi.
Yes.
Bulkowski.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Hennessy. Commissioner Hennessy.
Yes.
Commissioners Jones.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Legrand.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yeah.
Stack.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have nineteen ayes, zero nays. The motion passes. The board is closed and Commissioner Stan Stack has been appointed Vice Chair.
All right, Stan, would you like to say a couple of words?
Yes, thank you, Chair Bolter. First of all, thank you to the Commission for your expression of confidence in my continuing to serve as the Vice Chair. I remain convinced that all of the members of this Commission come to this task with sets of skills and commitments and conviction. And I will likewise commit to working collegially with each of you to ensure that we are able to accomplish what we are setting in front of us and to support the objectives and the goals of what we attempt to accomplish over the course of this year. That will, of course, require a fair amount of conversation that require a fair amount of collegiality and mutual respect. And I'm convinced that we will accomplish that. So thank you again for, for your election.
All right, now we are on to item eight of our agenda, election of our Minority Vice Chair. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, this is Sub Commissioner Hennessy. I would like to nominate the choice of the Democratic Caucus, Phil Skaggs.
Or Womack.
Nomination by Commissioner Hennessy, support by Commissioner Womack. Do we have any other nominations?
Our Commissioner Womack would like to nominate myself, Commissioner Robert S. Womack, as the first African-American to ever run for the Kent County Executive Committee as Minority Chair.
Motion by Commissioner Womack to nominate himself. Do we have a second? Don't see any hands and I don't hear anyone. All right, Madam Clerk, we have two, we have one nomination. I, Linda, I don't know if you want to, Madam Clerk.
Point of order, Madam Chair, there needs to, before we vote for, on the motion, there needs to be a motion to have the board closed?
I raise my hand to make a statement.
Can we, Robert, can we get through this nomination process or do you, do you want to make a statement now? Or do you want to do it in a later time?
That's fine. I can do it at a later time. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I would move to close nominations and have a roll call vote.
Moved by Commissioner Wooden, support by Commissioner Sparks. Madam Clerk.
To clarify, the motion made by Wooden and seconded by Sparks is to close the board and cast a, and cast a ballot for Commissioner Skaggs for Minority Vice Chair. Can you confirm that, Madam Chair?
What is the board? What is the board?
I'm sorry, the board.
I don't understand what the board is.
Commissioner, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Morgan, when I say close the board, I, what I meant was close nominations.
I understand. Thank you.
Commissioner Ponstein has his hand up. Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I think in my twelve years as a County Commissioner and forty-one years as a elected official, you know, I've questioned the Minority Vice Chair role in, in, in the past. And I spent a good vast majority of my evening last night going through social media and reading several posts. And what was really interesting was the hundreds of people who have, you know, commented on those posts. And it's clear to me that, you know, we've got seems like a family feud within the Democrat Party on, you know, what they say they stand for and what they stand for. And somehow during this fight to find a Minority Vice Chair, that the, the blame of this and the outcome is going to be put on the Republicans. And we had nothing to do with who they're putting forward. So, you know, it's, it's a divide that's using very toxic comments, you know, comments that we hear in Washington Daily, we hear in Lansing Daily. And I thought maybe county government would be a little bit different. So I think what, what I would suggest to the Democrats, you know, until you can come back with a hundred percent backing of who your candidate is, is maybe you should think about delaying this month and, and, and find a different path because, you know, the toxic language, the use of racism, you know, you know, against the Commission as a whole is just completely unfounded. I think Mandy's gone above and beyond to include everyone. It was the Republicans that added the Minority Vice Chair twelve years ago. So I'm, you know, I don't care who the nomination would have been, but under these circumstances, I don't think I could support anyone for Vice Chair until this feud within the Democrat Party is taken care of.
Commissioner Womack.
Yes, I have raised my hand and I would like to say to everyone that is watching that I have never made a post calling Kent County racist and I have never called the Republican Party racist nor the Democratic Party racist. But they are racist within the Democratic Party. And I am part of that party. There may be races in the Republican Party, but I am not a part of that party. So I would not know. For this not to come to this point, as me and my opponent are both leaders, elected by people in our district to be the voice and representative of those districts. I made many calls to my opponent. The first thing I told my opponent is I would likely be the first one to drop out of this and support him as I told him one. The first thing I told my opponent is I would likely be the first one to drop out of this and support him, as I told him once I would. When he said he was going to be the chair of the county. I'd never told him I would support him as minority chair. I thank Carol Hennessy and I thank David Bukowski, as I make this short, because as leaders of the, of the Democratic Party, they were the only two that asked all of us to come together and find out and work this out so I could support Mr. Phil Skaggs. I fought, called Phil Skaggs with the Democratic Party's compromise that would, Phil Skaggs would be the minority chair and I would be here supporting him this morning. Phil Skaggs told me and, and I said, you will support me next time so we can break this one hundred and ninety year color barrier where no African American, no Latino American, no Native American has ever been on the executive board. Phil Skaggs at that time told me he would never support me, ever. And that my career was done and I would never win another local election. This is managerial racism. I have watched Phil Skaggs, Carol Hennessy, David Bukowski and Jim Talent. When I was just a rookie, I watched the white people sit at the table. And we'd never had contention. They, over a drink, they would talk about who wants to be minority chair. People would talk compromise and we would leave the table. When I asked to sit at that table, when I asked to sit at that table, I said the same thing the white man said to each other. I said, why should I not run against you? He said, because you will lose. That was the end of the discussion. My opponent puts Steve Wooden in place and said he was naming him the caucus leader, because my opponent does not have the time to send the emails. And Mr. Wooden types all of these emails and does everything Jim Talent used to do. I sent an email out to all the commissioners and I said, I would like to run for minority chair. Within an hour, I was sent back an email that the, the emergency meeting for nomination would be tomorrow. That was on my Thanksgiving break. I had spent six months planning to join my radio station to give away turkeys. As I've done twenty years to my people that need help during the pandemic. I sent an email to Mr. Wooden and the Democratic Party and I begged them to please let that nomination be after Thanksgiving to give me time to talk to other commissioners. And if I saw I didn't have their support, of course, I probably would have withdrawn. But I wanted fair time to at least talk to them behind the scenes while I was running. I was told, no, it would be the next day and the first time in many years. My young men and my board members were out there without me. There was a massive shortage of people to come because I was not out there to do my social media to continue to let people know that it's there, it's real, and I am there. That is how I've been treated. Phil Skaggs has slipped and called me a boy. In conversations when he's telling me my career is done, you're not my guy. You are the reason that many young black people will not stand up and salute this flag. I stand up. I said the pledge of allegiance and I'm standing up today because of people like Commissioner Robert Womack, President Obama and Vice President Kamala Harris. There are still more black people that stand up and believe that despite four hundred years of racism, despite four hundred years of oppression, despite two hundred years of slavery, despite one hundred and ninety years of no black on the Kent County Executive Commission, Executive Committee, I should say, that one day, we will be judged by the content of our character. I don't care if nobody supports me. I come from a city in a neighborhood that believed I would be prison fodder. And I didn't believe in myself until I gave my life to God. And through him, I said, I can overcome all things and I believed in myself. And the day despite the threats to my career, I'm going to tell you, I believe in me. And I don't believe in me for me. I believe in me for all the young black kids out there that believe that racism is so bad that we shouldn't even try. I'm not here to condemn Phil Skaggs. He's my fellow Democrat. I'm here to challenge him to understand he was raised in America and it's not his fault. If I was bombarded with images that told me everything black was bad and gave me an inferior complex growing up, how could it not give my brother and my friend Phil Skaggs a superior complex? I challenge this Democratic Party that my people have voted in time and time again to join Commissioner Bukowski and Commissioner Hennessy and continue to sit down and find a path to break this color barrier. Ponstein is right. This is not a Republican issue. I'm in this Democratic Party and I am not going to sit behind the scenes and let my people continue to be fooled. The Democratic Party will sit down and they will carve a way for African American because I am qualified, appointed by Honorable Governor Gretchen Whitmer to co-chair the Black Advisory Council on Racism. If I am good enough for Governor Gretchen Whitmer, then I am good enough for the Kent County Commission. I thank the governor for believing in me because at this time I needed that type of support to continue not only to believe in me, but to believe in this American flag. I thank you, Chair Mandy Bolter, for allowing me to speak. I hope that we can find a way that I can support the Democratic Party on the minority chair. I do not think it was too much to ask Mr. Phil Skaggs to support an African American after his term and not as he said, the African American that shows him the most loyalty. I show my loyalty to God, number one. My family, number two. My people, number three. And my political party. I'm done.
Thank you, Commissioner Womack. Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I don't know, it's not, I don't know how I followed that. Robert, I want to apologize to you. I know we talked a lot. And I think there was a little bit of a misunderstanding this morning. The reason why I couldn't second your nomination was because it was, I was told it was inappropriate because this is something that comes out of the Democratic Caucus. And this, when they created this position, this was to be a democratic decision. And it wouldn't be appropriate for me to second something that the Democrats should have been doing. I've worked the phones, I've talked to most all the commissioners, trying to get them to open this up so we had a choice. I, I talked to several of you and I think you all know, I've been working this, this entire, this entire process has made me sick to my stomach, to be honest with you. Even though the years change, we still have the same systemic toxic tone and threats throughout the country. And unfortunately, like Commissioner Ponstein alluded to, now it's saturated into our local politics. I'm totally disgusted with this process. I think this minority vice chair needs to go away. My sense is if the Democrats would have flipped the board and we had a new chair, that position would have went away. Guarantee it would have. In my twelve years, I've never experienced such uncivil dialogue and activity, even here in Kent County. I've heard some really good people, including some of my Democratic colleagues, getting disparaged throughout the election cycle. And with this minority vice chair process, I've heard remarks about Administrator Brett, his staff, that were totally unwarranted, that were cheap shots, that were politically driven and disgusting. He and his staff didn't discuss, didn't deserve any of that. And we all know that, but it was cheap shots. I myself have been the recipient of some vile communications, voice messages left on my phone by cowards won't identify themselves. Whether keyboard warriors that, that posted on Facebook pages my address, encouraging people to come to my house to harass me, to come after me. Because why? Because I'm a Republican that supported Donald Trump. I'll tell you what, I live at ninety-three forty-one Lawback Avenue in Sparta, Michigan. I welcome you to come out to my house. Come on out. Come on out. I'll talk to you. Call me on my phone. I'll talk to you. Just identify yourself. This is disgusting. It seems like if you live in the wrong area code these days or support our president, you're automatically labeled racist. I've heard this racist BS being played out over the last couple of years, nonstop. It's, if you take the wrong side on anything, you are automatically labeled a racist. We are so much better than that. The race card should not be played. And I think we all know that. I've served with a lot of people on this board over the last twelve years, people that I vehemently disagree with on a lot of things. But at the end of the day, we could, we could talk civilly, we could go out. And it was stuff left in the chambers. And that's changed now. I am completely now, as an old white guy, fully woke to this new reality. I always felt that our board, under the leadership of Republican, of Republicans all these years, certainly over the last twelve, that we have served the citizens of Kent County very well, taking care of their money. It's not our money, people. It's their money. We're the executors of that money. We're supposed to be responsible with it. And we've done that. We've done that in Kent County. We follow the legacy of leadership that has taken care of the people's money while serving everyone and taking care of the problems that come up, whether it be lead abatement, procedures, whatever. You know, we, we've always been there. Water issues, inner city issues, especially now with, with, with Commissioner Womack in charge and, and taking his leadership role throughout the city while showing bipartisanship. He's done an unbelievable job. He's become a friend of mine. You know, when I first started, I was a lot like him. I came in with both guns blasting. I thought I was going to blow up the system. We find all this bad stuff going on in county government and I didn't find it. Sure, we had some issues and there were some things that bothered me. But I've never seen anything like this. And, you know, we had, we took the abortion language out of the benefits package. That was very controversial. We've had the land bank and we've had PDRs. Those are probably the most three controversial things we dealt with. But we dealt with them and there wasn't all this name call. So I don't want my name attached to this at all. I'm vo, I'm voting no. Because I think this whole thing stinks. I think Robert got shafted. I think if we had a ballot vote, this would swing the other way where everybody was anonymous. And I don't want to be a part of this process. And I, I'm very sorry to Wayman and Mandy, Robert, Stan Stack, Stan Ponstein, Lindsey Teo, Robert Womack. I, I apologize on behalf of my, my fellow, some of, some of my fellow commissioners, that you caught so much friendly fire, which turned out to be not friendly at all. It was very uncivil, very unprofessional. And I, 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 I feel bad for all of you to have to absorb all that for no reason whatsoever. So I'm done talking. I'm done with my rant. I will be voting no. And you can read into that however you want. I don't care.
Thank you. We do have miscellaneous at the end and I, I, I ask that we try to keep our comments to this motion. And I will call on Commissioner Morgan next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to try and calm down the rhetoric a little bit here and just appreciate Commissioner Womack for, you know, his, his treatment of staff and his passion. And also, I would like to, I appreciate his, he was magnanimous. You know, he supported Phil, Phil Skaggs. I don't want that to be lost on anybody. So, I do feel that, I don't know, this board is changing. We're getting a lot of Lansing influence. I don't know what it is. I don't know what the board is. I don't know a lot of things. But I got to tell you, like I told a lot of folks, these positions, and I've had a lot of positions on this county board. And after looking back, they're overrated. I'm going to say that again. It's overrated. I think you can have influence without these positions and without the title. So, I just want everybody just take a deep breath here and let's continue on with our work. And I just wanted to appreciate the passion. And I appreciate the second by Commissioner Womack and his magnanimous opinion. So, and let's move on. Thank you.
I'd like to make one short statement, Chair.
I don't see any other hands before we go to second round, Commissioner Womack.
I would really like to start twenty twenty-one, after this meeting, where we can get to our work. I did not come today to win. I supported when they put the motion for my Democratic brother Philip Skaggs. I supported the motion because I love the fact that Phil Skaggs is running. This is not a democracy if we don't run. But for this board, for people to call and tell people not to support me is because nobody even wants me to have my opportunity to run. Black people, we don't always win. But we always stand up. We always fight. Sometimes we get in the ring and we get knocked down. Every slave that ran away from slavery didn't make it. And many was lynched, but we kept trying. For nineteen commissioners, eighteen commissioners to rob me and my family and my district for the opportunity for me to be a minority that ran for the executive committee after one ninety, hundred and ninety years for to have three black commissioners in the political lockhold of my sisters is so strong, they can't even support me. All I ask is somebody to support me. Let's get this vote over. And let's do what we do after every vote. We shake hands. We are the leaders. We are strong and we are the voices for our communities and we hurt our communities if we take a vote against us personal and lose someone in the future that can support something that our community needs. But no one should be telling Antor, he can't support me. No one should be telling Democrats, they can't support me. I'm in an almost no win situation. But I will never forget this moment. The work behind the scenes to even keep me from the floor.
Commissioner Sparks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to address the comments that are being made right now and
Commissioner Sparks, we're having a hard time hearing you.
Let's see.
It's really, maybe go closer.
Can you hear me better now?
Yeah.
Okay, I'd like to address the comments that are being said right now by Commissioner Womack and others. He's not the only black person that serves on this board now. And I don't, do not believe that anyone is trying to stop you from an opportunity. And I don't, do not believe that anyone is trying to stop you from an opportunity. However, leadership is shown in character and when you're stretched. And the comments and the activity that you've aired on social media did not have to happen. Those comments were reflection, were a reflection of who you are and the negativity bringing it to, out to the public. There is a way in a system that we all, you didn't even tell us that you planned on running until after everyone agreed that Phil Skaggs was going to run. Then you wanted all of us to retract what we had already agreed to. I was not going to do that. And then we even had a conversation, you and I had a conversation, where you had to apologize to me for things that you had said and done. Period. And then you went right back on Facebook and did the same thing. Laundry.
Madam Commissioner, can we keep it to the motion? The comments need to be to the motion that's up right now.
I, I am, Madam Chair. I'm, I want everyone to know the reason why.
Okay.
He's trying to make it appear that-
Okay.
No support and no votes. The support is going to the individual as we know it, as we all discussed as a caucus. That's how we did that. It was not that anyone is against Robert. No one is against anyone because they're African American. That is not how that happened, and I do not want to make it seem he said that we are repressed, his African American sisters, that he calls the words B, that we are oppressed.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Uh, someone called someone a B?
You're out of order at this point.
Mandy Bolter, she just said that I caused someone to be word. That is not- Chair, point of order there, point of order here.
No, no, I need to be able to recognize you. Commissioner Sparks has the floor. We need to focus on comments to the motion.
I apologize, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you.
But we are not repressed. We voted based on the knowledge and the information that we had. And as I stated, the negativity on Facebook airing the dirty laundry, saying negative things is not what, who, uh, we want as our leader. We do not need that kind of energy. It's divisive and it's negative. So had he not gone as far as he had gone, and I even told him to contact me, but he did not. So this is where we're ending. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sparks. I would again ask that we keep comments to the specific motion. We do have miscellaneous at the end of this, of this meeting. Do we have any other comments to the motion? Commissioner Womack, you've spoken twice. Uh, Linda, what is the rule regarding?
I drop my hand. I wait for miscellaneous. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other Commissioner comments? All right, Madam Clerk, I turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. To clarify the motion, we had, uh, we had a motion to nominate, a motion and a second to nominate Skaggs, Commissioner Skaggs for minority vice chair. Um, we had a motion to nominate Commissioner Womack for minority vice chair. That motion died for lack of support. The motion before you on the floor is the motion to close nominations and vote for Commissioner Skaggs for minority vice chair. Commissioners Antor.
No.
Reevee.
Yes.
Volkowski.
Yeah. Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Morgan.
No.
Ponstein.
No.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yeah.
Stack.
Yes.
Teal.
No.
Womack.
Oh.
Wooden.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
I'm sorry, um, Madam Chair, um, Commissioner Wooden?
Yes.
Thank you. Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have fourteen yays, five nays. The motion passes and the board, the nominations are closed, and Commissioner Phil Skaggs is appointed minority vice chair.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Commissioner Skaggs, would you like to make a couple of comments?
Sure. Thank you, Chair Bolter. Um, I just want to thank the Commission for the opportunity to serve as minority vice chair. Um, in the not so distant past, the Commission forged a culture and a system that's uh, different from other partisan systems in Lansing and DC. Um, it's a quirky system, um, but it's worked for us over the last decade or so. Part of that system was the forging of the creation of the executive committee that included representation from the leadership of the minority party. Uh, leadership that was chosen by that minority party. That pathbreaking effort helped forge a culture of mutual respect, collaboration, and a belief that everyone is acting in good faith to do what's best for the people of Kent County. We might have policy differences. Um, and those policy differences will be public, but they will be made within that culture. Over the past few days and weeks and months, um, that system has been tested. I'm gonna mix my metaphors here, so forgive me. Um, it's been a tough storm. Um, it's been a very tough storm. But today we weathered that storm. And the steel of that culture that was forged about a decade ago has been tempered. Um, that's a difficult process. Uh, but it's one where hopefully we end um, stronger than when we came into it. I think this system that's been tested here and survived that test is one that I hope, regardless of what happens in in the near, medium, and long-term future, is one that we can keep. Um, keep the system on the executive committee and keep the uh, keep the culture that we have. As Chair Bolter said, we've got a lot of work to do this coming year. I won't repeat it. Um, but I just want to say I look forward with working with the entire Commission to do our job, um, which is to work for our constituents, um, within that shared culture. Uh, and I promise to put in the hard work to bring results. So, um, if Commissioner Morgan will allow me to quote him, let's move on. Thanks, everyone.
All right, we are on to public comment related to the agenda. I did see a few uh, people in chat who had requested uh, public comment. Additionally, um, Pam, I would ask that you check the email inbox.
Chair, there is a request to speak under public comment in the inbox from Maggie Rivera.
Okay. Maggie, Maggie, are you there?
I am. Thank you.
You have three minutes. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for showing the timer. Um, today, Maggie Rivera from Kent County, Grand, City of Grand Rapids, rubbery, uh, resident, Kent County District sixteen. Um, I am addressing the process of the elections on the agenda. Uh, as a constituent, um, I'm very concerned about what I, what has been displayed here. As a constituent, I'm hoping to be a part of a solution for this Commission and this governing body as a constituent, to get involved more with the Commission regarding the fact that systems of oppression are in fact racist, and that is not a statement against any one individual. Please stay focused on the system itself. We all know that white supremacy systems are built and, and grow and fester on who the system works for. If we stay focused on the system, that could help us get through some very difficult conversations and experiences and sometimes trauma. It's very clear to me that there's trauma occurring when these issues are skirted and skirted, and then they, they flare up during elections. So if we could stay focused on that, as a constituent, I recommend that this governing body stay out of party politics. It's ugly. It's hurtful. And it's racist. And that's speaking from personal experience in both Ottawa County and Kent County. And it's not about each party. It's about the system itself. Also, I recommend that this governing body, as a constituent who is concerned, seek some relief and look into getting a consultant, a diversity, racial equity, and inclusion consultant to assist this governing body with all of its dismantling and abolishing white supremacy in the system that you have been voted to represent. And to Commissioner Womack, um, I look forward to connecting with you soon. I thank you for your vulnerability and transparency. You have definitely opened that box. And if you could please, uh, it looks like, uh, I might be connecting with somebody here, some of the commissioners. If we could please connect as soon as possible, I'd greatly appreciate that. And Kent County Commissioners, please dismantle your Democratic Party caucus. Uh, it's ineffective. It's, it's perpetuating racism and some of the systemic things that Robert and others have experienced, just because one or the other does not have the same experience, does not mark, does not, um, does not negate everyone's each own lived experience. So it's very disheartening to see some of our A-BIPAC commissioners at odds, but it's pretty consistent with who they are as um, uh, leaders in the community. That's not a slight, that's an observation, and I've been in the middle of that. But thank you, Commissioners, for your time today.
Thank you, Maggie. Are there any other uh, hands raised or emails in the email inbox or public comment? I don't see any other hands. Pam is telling me there are no other messages. All right, let's put our agenda back up on the screen, please. All right, we're gonna move on to item ten, consent agenda. Now I'll call Commissioner Stack.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I move approval of the consent agenda of today's date, which involves approval in minutes of December seventeen, twenty twenty meeting, and the December fifteen, twenty nineteen Finance Committee meeting.
Moved by Commissioner Stack, support by Commissioner- Commissioner Jones, questions or comments on the consent agenda? No hands. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt the consent agenda, Commissioners Antor.
Yes.
Reevee.
Yes.
Volkowski.
Yes.
Burl. Commissioner-
Yes.
Commissioners Green.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Sparks. Commissioner Sparks. Commissioner Sparks.
Yeah. Can you hear me?
I can now. Thank you, Commissioner. Vice Chair Stack.
Yes.
Commissioners Teal.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have nineteen yays, zero motion passes. The consent agenda is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are on to item eleven of our agenda, resolutions, and I will call on Commissioner Ponstein.
What an honor to get the first resolution of the year. So, I move resolution one of this date, January fifth, two thousand twenty-one, for the appointments to various boards, commissions, and committees for the two thousand twenty-one Board of County Commissioners.
Moved by Commissioner Ponstein, support by Commissioner-
Reevee.
Reevee. Questions or comments on resolution one? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt resolution one, Commissioners Antor.
Yes.
Reevee.
Yes.
Volkowski.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Sparks. Commissioner Sparks, you're on mute.
Yes.
Thank you. Vice Chair Stack.
Yes.
Commissioners Teal.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have nineteen yays, zero nays. The motion passes, the res- uh, the resolution one. Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner McLeod, did I call your roll?
No.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, uh, on the motion to adopt resolution one.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner McLeod. My apologies. Madam Chair, you have nineteen yays, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution one is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We're on to item twelve of the agenda. I'll call Commissioner Stack.
Yes, thank you, Chair Bolter. I, I think I'm moving to approve the appointment by the Chair of the Standing Committees or ratification of that, and I'm terribly sure which is required at this point. Whichever it is, I move for it.
All right, and I, and I believe Pam, you need to fill in that bottom section there.
Yes. Doing that right now.
Since we just voted?
Yes. That document is updated.
All right, moved by Commissioner Stack, support by Commissioner-
Support by Reevee.
Reevee. Questions or comments on this item? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Vice Chair Stack, would you please repeat that motion?
Can't hear you. You're on mute.
I'm moving to approve and or ratify the appointments designated in the attached sheets.
Thank you, Vice Chair Stack. On the motion to approve or ratify the appointments, Commissioners Antor.
Yes.
Bull, uh, Reevee.
Yes.
Volkowski.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yeah.
Stack, uh, Vice Chair Stack. Vice Chair Stack.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioners Teal.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have nineteen yays, zero nays. The motion passes, the uh, appointment and rat- or ratification of these appointments is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are on to item thirteen. Don't know that we are subcommittee appointments. Pam, what motion needs to be made here?
Oh, the subcommittee appointments, Chair, are the, is the administrator-
The administrator search, okay.
Yes.
So- Okay, I believe we were just going to reappoint, um, the same board for that, uh, to proceed with, with who, who we had on the, uh, subcommittee before. Uh, just to continue that work, but we are not taking any voting action, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Now we're on to item fourteen, public comment related to general county matters. Do we have any public comment today? Don't see any hands raised. No one in the inbox? All right, since there are none, I do have one, uh, public comment request from our clerk. Uh, Madam Clerk, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to, um, welcome a new member joining the ranks of- Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to welcome a new member joining the ranks of the countywide elected officials and welcome and introduce our new treasurer, Peter McGregor. I know he's on the line here today, so just really look forward to working with him in his new capacity and working with you as well.
Hello, Commissioner McGregor. Would you like to say a couple of words in public comment? I'm sorry, Mr. McGregor, Treasurer McGregor.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I'm excited to be here as the your new county treasurer and working with all the citizens here in Kent County. So please feel free to stop in and and say hi and help me understand what's important to you. And I look forward to meeting and and working with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Treasurer McGregor. Any other public comment? All right, seeing none. Let's move on to Commissioner reports. These are official reports given by Commissioners. A report out of any subcommittees there on Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just Happy New Year, everybody, and everybody look for the CEO of the airports memo to you folks. That's how I get the information out. I go directly to the source, so it's not shaded or 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 filtered by me. So look for those reports in your email this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Morgan. Any other official reports today? I know many, many groups didn't meet recently, so you may not have any other reports. All right, moving on to miscellaneous, item 16. Who would like to speak in miscellaneous today? Mr. Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. So yes, I think it was said by Commissioner Stack that 2020 had a lot of challenges. I think 2021 will have those same challenges. I don't think COVID-19 is going anywhere quickly. I think one point that I made early on in the virus is that, you know, we've got a lot of people disputing the death toll, the cause of death. And one thing that's come clear to me is that a lot of the deaths are kind of cooccurring with something else that that's happening in that person's life. And it's it's hit the minority communities the hardest. But but I think what we need to focus on is in a county is what those underlying conditions are. You know, food and diet, access to medical, access to quality housing, access to quality mental health, schools, et cetera. There's a lot of underlying conditions that are taking the lives. And COVID-19 is 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 the one that's getting the blame. But there's a lot of people that survive COVID-19. So I think that's something that we've got to focus on. That's something that it's not the first that I'm talking about these topics, but we've got to address those underlying conditions because this isn't just happens with COVID-19. It happens with all diseases, you know, cancer, the seasonal flu, diabetes. Those are all things that make a community strong. And I I I think we've got to up our efforts on those underlying conditions and make make Kent County, you know, the great place that it can and will be. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ponstein. Any other miscellaneous today? I don't see any of, oh.
Yes.
Commissioner Womack.
Yes, I I would like to congratulate Phil Skaggs on being Minority Chair. I did support his nomination. I think I think it would have been an admirable conclusion if he had supported my nomination. And but we still have to move forward. I am so glad that I did nominate myself, or people would have no chance to see how some of the caucus meetings are performed behind the scene. There are rumors spread that divide us. I am so proud of Commissioner Michelle McLeod. I am so proud. She's someone that told me her reasons for voting, and I think they were 100% legit. But we're hearing from Commissioner Sparks that I called the the Commissioners B words. Those are the type of rumors that get spread. And I would never, ever call my fellow Commissioners B words. That has been put out here. It also was a lie that I did not call Mrs. Sparks. Me, Mrs., I have phone records that I called her many times. She called me once. I missed it. And I called her back another three, four times continuously after that. We also talked with the NAACP, who will be a witness as Cleat Jackson has ex Monica Sparks on the conversation that he talked to her. Not the whole something that I said in 1998 that I don't remember saying, but she said I said it in 1998. So I did apologize to her when she say I did even apologize. I'm looking forward for more positive 2021. But it just has to be the truth that this has finally made it to the Kent County Commission, but this has happened with Commissioner Jim Talent being called a racist, a letter writ and and supported by my opponent that I'll be posting today, a letter written by Monica Sparks calling the entire Kent County Commission a racist and calling Mandy Bolter a racist. And then I said I could not support that at that time because the reason seemed more political. And at that time, I was called a Republican, and this has continued. There's nobody in the Democratic Party that knows that this type of behavior and rumors has hurt my opponent as bright a person as he is. These Grand Rapids mayor's race is a nonpartisan race. The mayor is not a part of any, ex mayor is not a part of any political party. But my opponent also called a Republican. This is the type of atmosphere that's going on. No one refutes it to tell me to follow the protocol that has kept African Americans and Hispanics off the Kent County Executive Committee for 190 years to tell me to follow that protocol by keeping this off social media, by not talking about actually true things. As I end, I will say for four years, I have sat here with Republicans and Democrats. And never have you saw this type of conversation come from Commissioner Robert Womack. We have been on some productive things. We gave $25 million to small businesses. We have worked on our lead task force. We have worked on vouchers for the homeless, so they wouldn't have to be out in the snow. These are the things I have concentrated on. While I was concentrating on that, my name was being smeared that by the time I raised my hand for Minority Chair, as Commissioner Sparks said, they already signed the oath of loyalty and said I did not apply till after they signed. That oath of loyalty was signed because I had already told people in the Democratic Party I was going to run. But I was busy doing business clinics to help increase minority participation in the stimulus money, and we had such a little time. That while I was doing that, people were spreading these rumors that I was a Republican, that I called all the black Commissioners on the board B words. Sorry, Mandy Bolder, that I raised my hand during that time. That's a that's a very harsh statement to make here in public. I will be praying for this Kent County Commission. And I will continue to act for meetings with the Democrats and Republicans, Commissioners, to sit down. So all of this won't always have to take up our meetings because this is not what our meetings are about. I look forward to our next meeting, getting back on our journey of what we do. We deliver services to our citizens of Kent County. And they need these services. The decisions we make in 2021 will define whether businesses close or receive enough money just to squeak through this year. The decisions we make will decide if people get the proper education and get that early support with early five. If we can abate some rented homes, lives will depend on our decision. And you can expect me to honor the decision, support and listen to the Minority Chair, support and listen to my fellow Commissioners and work at the the task at hand to continue delivering services to our great communities that have voted us into office. This is Kent County Commissioner Robert S. Womack. Thank you. And if you would like to have any the things I said on here today, you can go through this video. And anything I said, I can produce evidence of it. And I can produce Cleat Jackson to tell you everything that I said that was told to the NAACP about why Commissioner Monica Sparks would never support me as the NAACP begged us to work together. And it was said that it will never happen. I think that happened before I became a Kent County Commissioner. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Stack.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. So I think this meeting reflects that we all come to this table and to this board from different places. We come to this place and this board with different perspectives, different political beliefs. Certainly, we have different thoughts about where we need to go and what we need to do. But as I started this meeting reciting, we face some incredible challenges here at the county and in this in the state and this country. These are challenges that simply cannot be effectively addressed if we continue to focus on what differences we have. The only way we can deal with that is if we set these aside. And as Commissioners, stay focused on what needs to be done for the best interests of our community, our constituents. So I encourage all of us, we do come from different places. We do have different thoughts. We have different political perspectives and thoughts. But we need to stay focused on what we need to do. That means putting aside our differences and dealing with them straight on. So I look forward to doing that over the course of the next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Stack. Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. So as I look at the calendar, I am a few weeks away from being a Commissioner for seven years. And one of the pieces that I have enjoyed and take seriously is my role as the Chair of Finance. And in talking with Wayman and with working with the others to get to get other new Commissioners up and running. I remember my first meeting like it was yesterday, as I'm sure many who are new are going to remember this meeting many years going forward. And I want to do what I can to help get those who are new up to speed and as educated as possible in order to do their job to the best of their abilities. So in working with Wayman and staff and with Mandy, we want to make sure that we have things that we've done well when we all came on board. And one of those things was some boot camps. And I know that these meetings are open to the public. They're open to all the Commissioners. And I do want to encourage all the Commissioners, if they can at all get that in their schedule, to please attend. Because having that extra depth of attending a boot camp, one serves as a great reminder to you. But you also bring experience and comments that wouldn't be there if you don't attend. So I'm hoping that these boot camps are well attended and that they are helpful for everyone who comes. And I'm looking forward to getting that scheduled through Wayman and staff. Thank you.
Any other miscellaneous today? I don't see any hands raised. I just have a couple of quick things. Again, thank you so much for putting your faith and trust in me to lead this board. I really hope that the next meeting is better than this one. We will be focusing on a lot of work sessions this year because we do have four new board members. I'm sure I'm getting some eye rolls from some of our veteran board members, but they are optional. You don't have to show up to these. So I do want to just say that we we want to make sure again that every Commissioner has the tools they need to serve at the best of their ability. The boot camps will be scheduled. Please note, now that we have finance and legislative, note that on your calendar. I I think Pam will be sending all of that out as well. We also, I did change the board calendar that for the year. I'm very hopeful, everybody say a little prayer, that we can meet in person for one evening meeting. I did change the evening meeting in the summer to to the July meeting. And I'm hopeful that we can meet in person out at the Meadows for our board meeting and then also send have a proper send off of our Administrator Wayman Brett at that time with a public reception. So note all of that on your calendar, please. Other than that, I will call on Commissioner Stack for a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I move to adjourn this meeting subject to the call of the Chair to Thursday, January 28, 2000, excuse me, 2021 at 8:30 a.m.
Move by Commissioner Stack, support by Commissioner.
Support by Jones.
Jones. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Happy New Year, everyone.